Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Meyer, President and CEO of the Leewood Chamber of Commerce in EDC, and it is my honor to host today's candidate forum for the Leewood City Council Ward III with our candidates Mitch Lore and Rachel Rubin. The Johnson County Public Policy Council comprised of 10 chambers of commerce serving Johnson County developed today's questions focusing on community and city issues. We will first start with a brief three-minute opening statement from each candidate, followed by questions and answers, where the candidates will each have a minute and a half to answer the question, and then we'll end with two minutes for a closing statement. So to kick things off, we'll start out with the opening statements, and we did flip a coin earlier. So Candidate Rubin, you are up first. So go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Rachel Rubin, and I wanted to thank the Leewood Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity, and thanks to Stephanie for moderating. So I'm running for Leewood City Council because I care about Leewood, and I care about the residents, and I want their voices to be heard. Ward III residents deserve to have an experienced representative by someone who's lived in the ward for many years and who has been an active participant in Leewood issues. As an attorney for 26 years, I'm trained to listen, to ask good questions, and I'm a problem solver. And these are skills that I will use on behalf of Ward III residents to be an effective representative. I'm not a career politician, and that's not my goal. I want to represent people here locally. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Ovaland Park, and I attended Shawnee Mission South High School. I went away to college in Massachusetts in Amherst, and then graduated from the University of Kansas School of Law. I practiced law at Lathrop Engage for six years, and then in 2005 started my own practice. I've been a Leewood homeowner and taxpayer for 11 years. We bought our house in Waterford when our son was just starting kindergarten, and now he is a junior at Blue Valley North. About five years ago, I shifted my focus to community service, since giving back to my community is a very important value of mine. I was asked to serve on the Board of the Jewish Community Center of Greater Kansas City in 2021, where I currently serve, and I've been the Vice Chair for Leadership Development on the Board for the past two years. Also, five years ago, I became involved with my neighbors in Waterford, Willshire Place, Greenbrier, Leewood South, and the Enclave around development issues, traffic safety, and pedestrian and bicycle safety. In that capacity as a leader, I spoke numerous times before the Planning Commission, the City Council, and also the Public Works Committee. Therefore, I'm ready to hit the ground running. As an attorney, I'm trained to ask questions that are probing and to be a problem solver. I'm running for Leewood City Council because I want to give back and because I have the skills and experience necessary to be effective for residents on day one. I believe that I can best help to improve the quality of life by focusing on local issues. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Next up, we will have Candidate Mitch Lore with three minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Stephanie, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this event. My name is Mitch Lore. I've lived in Leewood for 24 years. My parents actually moved to Leewood from Prairie Village the month before I was born, which, if you ask my mom, probably wasn't the best timing. I grew up here in Leewood. I went to Leewood Elementary, Leewood Middle School. I'm a proud graduate of BVN. I did go to the University of Arkansas. I hope people don't hold that against me. But after receiving my master's degree, I actually went to go work in the U.S. House of Representatives as a legislative staffer. There, I got hands-on legislative and policy experience on issues ranging from the environment and climate change to energy policy, natural resources, and protecting public education from budget cuts. But more importantly, though, my time in DC gave me the opportunity to work on constituent services. That was working directly with people, people who called in, people who wrote handwritten letters or emails, who had trouble navigating the federal government. I had real experience getting these people the answers that they needed and the answers that they deserved. I helped people make sure that government worked for them, served them, and that's what I believe strongly in. Two years ago, we had the opportunity to move back to Leewood, my wife and I. We knew we wanted to start our family, and it was absolutely a no-brainer for us. I think that whether you've lived here one month, one decade, or one century, doesn't matter. It's so easy to see how special Leewood is. I know firsthand, having grown up here. And now, actually, my wife and I live in the house that I grew up in, raising our young family here in Leewood, and I wouldn't have it any other way. I want to bring to City Council a young family's perspective. I think that it's important to have diversity of opinions and diversity of perspective as well, but I can also bring real government experience to my hometown, making sure that the local city government works and serves the people. I want to make sure that I help Leewood prosper for generations to come, because we didn't get here by chance. It's been through mindful, thoughtful, strong leadership over decades, and I want to be here to help future generations enjoy Leewood, just as I was able to. I'm committed to the city. I'm committed to raising our family here. And in fact, just a month after we moved into the house, our son was born. So he was born a little early, so that was not planned. I think something's in the water here. But Leewood's a special place. It's a special place to me. It's a special place to all of you, and I look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to serve it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mitch.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we will move on to the question-answer portion. So again, as a reminder, you'll have a minute and a half to respond, and I'll be timekeeper again. And we will switch it up, and we'll start with Mitch. So first question, as a candidate, what are your top three priorities for Leewood?
Yeah. Well, I never got into this because, as a single-issue candidate, there's not some corner on a street that I desperately want to put a stop sign in. I got into this because I feel like I have an opportunity to give back to the community that's given me so much. If I had to list off some priorities, though, I think it's important to ensure that we have safe, vibrant neighborhoods where families can grow and thrive and children can play safely. I think it's important to ensure smart, mindful growth that preserves our city's unique character, and I want to make sure that we maintain excellent city services. People move here and want to stay here because of the services that they receive, whether it's the exceptional snow plowing that we have, whether it's the parks and recreation opportunities that we have. I think that's important and vital to preserve the things that we get to enjoy here as Leewood residents. I think balancing all that is the main priority, and I look forward to having the opportunity to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Rachel, same question. As a candidate, what are your top three priorities for Leewood?
Okay. So I think development is a number-one issue. I got involved with city issues because of new development near my neighborhood, and we have very limited land that's remaining in Leewood that isn't developed. It's very valuable and very costly. So we need to develop it carefully and thoughtfully, and I'm part of the Comprehensive Plan Stakeholder Committee. We have a new comprehensive plan process going on, so I'm part of the team with developers, residents, and technical experts to look at that and to make hopefully some positive improvements in our comprehensive plan. That's especially important on 135th Street. Rising property taxes is another issue, and the mill levy has remained flat in Leewood. However, property values continue to increase, and so I think there's some opportunities for the city to sharpen its pencil on contracts that it has with private vendors. There's $18.6 million in private vendor contracts that Leewood has out of 86 million. So I think it's the best practice to audit and review contracts on a periodic basis to make sure that the taxpayers are getting good value for our money. And so I think we need to have a goal of trying to lower the mill levy so that we can at least keep taxes flat and not have them increase every single year. Infrastructure is another big issue. We need to remediate flooding. Several areas have persistent flooding. Okay, I will stop, and I'll get back to these issues later. Thank you.
It goes fast.
Yes.
Okay. Rachel, you are first up on this one. What are your views on the services and value the city's citizens receive for their local tax dollars?
Okay. So we receive excellent value for our services here in Leewood. So again, I've owned my home in Waterford for 11 years. I've had 11 seasons of snow removal. I frequent the parks. I go to Elon Park, Geser, and Ironwoods. They're beautiful. All the trails are maintained, and I love that. We have green spaces. We have shopping amenities, cultural events, and really delicious restaurants. So those are all things that I appreciate. Speeding is the number-one concern. The city did a resident survey, and speeding is the number-one resident concern. So in that regard, I'd like to see the city implement additional opportunities for traffic calming without residents having to go through an arduous process. So cities like Kansas City in Missouri are installing 120 new speed tables, and the citizens don't have to go through any kind of process. So if you compare Kansas City to Leewood, that would be six speed tables a year for Leewood because of our size. I think that's a very doable number. People are very concerned about speeding through their neighborhoods, and the cost is about $10,000 per speed table. So it's very reasonable.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Same question for you, Mitch. What are your views on the services and value the city's citizens receive for their local tax dollars?
I mean, I think it's unquestionable that we receive exceptional services for our tax dollars. The value that we get out of every cent is just astounding. In fact, I think it's important to note that Leewood actually is tied for the second lowest mill levy in the Johnson County area, and what we get for that is amazing. It really is. It's very impressive. I think that is thanks to the long-term vision of Leewood leaders. Decades ago, Leewood knew that we could not remain a bedroom community and that we needed to create some kind of form of revenue, and that was the plan to put in place Town Center and that whole corridor right there. It's thanks to that kind of long-term planning that we're able to actually keep the mill levy at the same rate, which is also important to note that the county is actually the entity in charge of appraisal values. So Leewood, as a city, has no control over that. But what we get for our money, there's no doubt that we get exceptional services, and that's why people want to move here. That's why people want their kids to move back here. That's why people want to stay here.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Mitch, you're up first on this one. What changes, if any, would you like to see in the city's budget?
You know, I think that the city budget is extremely well set. I think that, as we've just said, the services that citizens receive is top-tier. The city itself, because of its strong economic status, has a triple-A bond rating, and so I think the City Council over the past few decades, and really since Leewood's inception, has been exceptional stewards of taxpayer dollars. I think that if there's any changes that need to be made, we can always look towards how are we spending money on public safety? How effective are our police force and first responders able to respond to incidents and make sure that our city streets and our residents are safe? I think that's very important. Our infrastructure is also something that lots of residents really appreciate. You just drive across state line, and suddenly feel like you're driving on gravel in some places because of the potholes over there. I think that what we get for our tax dollar and how the city sets its budget already is in a very responsible, respectful way, and as a City Council member, I would intend to continue that strong, responsible stewardship.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Rachel, same question. What changes, if any, would you like to see to the city budget?
So I attended the Budget Committee meeting earlier this year and just noticed a couple of items that I would like to work on. So one is the 5% supervisory fee that every capital improvement project is being tacked on to every capital improvement project to pay for a private consultant to supervise the project. So it's a lot of money. So 5% of like 20 million is $1 million paid to a private consultant. The reason they needed to do that is because we lost our city engineers for almost a year, and so we need to make sure we pay our city engineers, you know, very good salary and benefits to retain quality engineers, because it's much better to have an employed engineer represent the city. A private contractor actually installs the project. So then you have a private consultant reviewing another private contractor, and I think for quality control, we need a Leewood engineer and employee to do that supervision. So I believe that we need to, again, look at contracts that the city has with private vendors, and I'm not saying that, you know, maybe we'll find nothing, but I think at least having the review is something that is good stewardship, so that if we have a long-term contract with a vendor, let's make sure that it's treating taxpayers fairly. And we want to make sure that any overruns with contracts are not charged to the city, but that the private contractor is held responsible, because they can get the lowest bid and then come back later and say, well, we had a cost overrun, and the city will pay for that. So thank you.
Great. Okay. Next question. I'll start with Rachel. What role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investment to the community?
So I think the city plays an integral role in economic development in the city, and we just saw a great example of that last night, where the City Council voted to approve a large project, Hall Brook North, and we're very excited to have, hopefully Lockton will be coming to Leewood, and the city worked with the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council to make that happen. So I think that's a perfect example. I think the city needs to be involved in economic development. We need to be working with developers, talking to them, letting them know our standards. I think that the standards, the building, the LDO, needs to be modified so that everyone knows upfront the substantive requirements and also aesthetic requirements. We want to keep character in Leewood. We want beautiful buildings. We want stone. We want, you know, not just like generic buildings that are built in other cities and then brought to Leewood. We want something unique. I think people live in Leewood because it's unique and it's beautiful, and it's a very special place to raise our families and our kids. No other city is like it in the metro area, and it's a place that I love living. I appreciate everything about Leewood. So again, Stephanie's done a wonderful job with the Leewood Chamber of Commerce, and the city just needs to continue that kind of work. And also get some resident input. What do residents want? You know, what kind of development do residents want to see? I think that's a good question to ask. I don't know if we really have surveys on that, and I think that's something that the Comprehensive Plan can take a look at, because there are residents like me who are on that committee, and so we can give our input, which I think is very valuable.
Okay. Same question to you, Mitch. What role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investment to our community?
I think that the city has, for a long time, played a very key pivotal role in economic development, and a very smart role at that. I hope you'll forgive me for keep talking about the decades-long vision that City Council has long had, but I am a very big history fan and a very big, I really appreciate the vision that the city leaders have had for so long. If you look at the development of Town Center and the Tomahawk Creek Parkway Court, or really as a whole, that itself has allowed the city to prosper by prioritizing single-family homes and different kinds of residential projects that promote ownership while keeping our mill levy steady or lower. One of the things that's really, that I think is really important to note is just how smart the City Council has been in being friendly towards businesses. It allows us to be selective with what businesses come in and we work with, but also we become a very attractive target for businesses. They want to come here. They want to work with us. They want to have these amazing developments like Hall Brook North, and the city has tools at its disposal to make that possible, and I think that the city should always consider what resources we have to promote friendly relations with businesses.
Okay. That was a good segue. To the next question, we'll start with you, Mitch. As the city considers future development and redevelopment projects, describe your views on how Leewood should best manage and balance that growth.
Yeah. Well, I think with the Hall Brook North project in particular, I think it allows a great opportunity to diversify the tax base by bringing commercial and business residents. A huge office space like that, combined with retail and restaurants, you're going to have people coming from all across the metro and certainly all across Johnson County who want to go and experience the Leewood City Park and want to experience Hall Brook North. I think that, as we consider, one of the biggest challenges that we have facing Leewood is the fact that there are only so many remaining acres of land to be developed, and once that's done, you have to look inward. I think a future issue that residents are going to face is a similar issue that older communities in Johnson County have faced already. A lot of houses, older houses, being torn down and redeveloped, and I think that we have to find a way to make the city's policies transparent with community input. We need to make sure that we let residents know what the guidelines are, and we are flexible. We can work with residents to make sure that they enjoy the benefits of Leewood as we move forward with development and redevelopment.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Same question for you, Rachel. As the city considers future development and redevelopment projects, describe your views on how Leewood should best manage and balance that growth.
So Leewood was developed as a residential community, and so many people have come to Leewood because of the beautiful residential neighborhoods, and it's wonderful that we also have businesses. We have, you know, all the different shopping areas and restaurants, but there's a tension between the residents who have, you know, beautiful residential areas and bringing in new business and new developments. So I just think that we need to talk to residents and, you know, find out what they want for their neighborhoods. For example, with East Village, I got involved with my neighbors because it was adjacent to our subdivisions, and what we wanted was a Meadowbrook development. It was 115 acres of land, a beautiful piece of land, would have been a wonderful Meadowbrook, and we advocated with the developer to say, please, let's have in this development a 10-acre park. Keep in mind Meadowbrook Park is 47 acres. We just wanted 10 acres out of 115. And the developer was not interested in that, and unfortunately, the city, you know, did not make that happen. And so there's going to be 2,000 new residents at East Village when it's all built, and there is no additional city park. So Geser Park is already pretty much at capacity, and that was, I think, a lost opportunity where we could have had both. We could have had wonderful new development, new housing, beautiful villas, smaller footprint than these huge, you know, single-family houses, and then also shopping and retail, but also a public park.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Rachel will start. What is your philosophy on the role the city should play in terms of metro area issues?
So Leewood is a very small community compared to other cities in Johnson County. We only have about 34,000 residents, and we are very, you know, small compared to, you know, the Kansas City proper. I think we can be, we can have our place, but it's not Leewood's job to, that's not Leewood's job. Leewood's job, I think, in my opinion, is to be concerned about our city and our residents and our businesses and be a team player with metro area projects like the World Cup. We definitely, and we are a part of the World Cup, you know, Planning Committee. The mayor, I know, is very involved in that. So I think that's good. We can be a leader, but we don't have to be out front because we are small, and our population, it's small compared to other cities in Johnson County like Ovaland Park, has a much more diverse, you know, population of over 300,000 people. So I think we need to play our part proportionate to our population in the entire metro area.
Okay. Thank you. And Mitch, same question. What is your philosophy on the role the city should play in terms of metro area issues?
Well, the city itself is part of this large, really wonderful network of cities within Johnson County, but also within the entire Kansas City metro. I think, you know, everyone, we're all bonded by being Chiefs fans, by Royals fans. We're torn apart by Mizzou, KU, K-State. I think it's important to note what are these issues that we're talking about with metro-wide issues. It's smart, the smart way to approach this would be to look at what those issues are. Are we experiencing that and dealing with that here in Leewood? Are our neighbors dealing with that? Because we can't necessarily control what happens to the north, south, east, or west of us. We can control what happens here in Leewood. At least, City Council can. But I see no reason why we can't work together to help improve our entire lot. There was a question at the previous forum about the homeless population that's along state line, and I think it's important to note that the percentage of people experiencing homelessness across the metro, across the country, has risen. That's a nationwide issue. What Leewood can do to protect its citizens and get these people the help that they need and make people feel more comfortable and safe is to work with the city of Kansas City as well as Ovaland Park and other cities that are similarly experiencing these issues, see what they're doing, how can we pool resources to make sure that this isn't all on Leewood's dime, and this isn't all on Leewood's time. And I think that that's the responsible way to have Leewood be part of metro-wide issues.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we will stay with you, Mitch. Do you believe Leewood is heading in the right direction?
I think it absolutely is. I think that it's, we have a thriving community. We have unique character. We have people who want to move here, people who want to move back here, and people who want to stay here. I think that the key to moving forward is to balancing the city's growth with the preservation of our character. I think that if you look at, for example, the example of East Village, I think that, yes, Meadowbrook is a wonderful, wonderful park. There's no doubt about that. Unfortunately, that wouldn't be viable within the parameters of East Village. One, Meadowbrook was built upon an 18-hole golf course. Also, two, Meadowbrook was a county and city project. And three, I think that it's important to note that I don't believe that would necessarily be responsible stewardship of Leewood's taxpayers and their money to put in a large park when there's already a wonderful Geser Park right there. And also, there is a substantial amount of green space within the East Village project. I'm not saying that the project is perfect. I'm not saying that it's wonderful or this or that. I think that I'd love to promote more ownership in Leewood citywide, but it's important to note that the city itself has been responsible in approaching these issues, and I think that it's important to build on that legacy moving forward in how we deal with future issues.
Okay. Thank you. Rachel, same question. Do you believe Leewood is heading in the right direction?
I absolutely think Leewood is heading in the right direction. I've been very impressed with Mayor Elkins. He has done a wonderful job. I lived here and worked with Mayor Dunn and also Scott Lambert, the former city manager, and I'm just, I'm really pleased with Diane Stoddard and her leadership and Mayor Elkins' leadership as well. He's been very, he's so cordial and polite during City Council meetings, and I think he's very open-minded and has made a lot of positive changes. One amazing change is the hiring of Beth Breitenstein. She is the Communications Director, and she has done a wonderful job with social media, public relations, letting residents know what's going on. I think before she was hired, residents didn't really know what City Council and City Hall were doing, and now that Beth is on board, she's so talented, and she has, you know, a podcast, and she has posts, and it just really makes you feel more included, and I think that's a wonderful, wonderful addition. So I think, I just want to comment on East Village real quick. Again, like I said, East Village, we were not looking for a 47-acre park, which is what Meadowbrook has. We were looking for a 10-acre park, and when East Village is going to bring in 2,000 additional residents, I think it's important to look at the stress on a park. So that was the issue there. But, you know, going forward, I hope that we can find opportunities for the city to find other park space, because I think parks are really important.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Rachel, we'll start with you for this one. What do you believe are the greatest challenges Leewood faces over the next 10 years, and how would you address them?
So I think the greatest challenge is, you know, how to balance resident concerns with development and how, you know, we had this problem with East Village. You have existing subdivisions, and then you have, you know, vacant land, and how do you develop that land? And try to work with the residents. Of course, residents can't get everything they're asking for. I understand that. You have to be, we have to be strategic, and that's what I learned as an attorney. You know, you don't, you're not going to get everything you want. You can be strategic in what you ask and hopefully get something. So it's not easy. I'm not saying that I have the answer of how to balance, you know, the needs of the city to have future development and then the resident needs, but I know that residents need to feel heard, and, you know, residents came to many meetings at the City Council and the Planning Commission, and many people walked away feeling that they weren't heard or that their input wasn't received. And so I, instead of just quitting, like a lot of, you know, my neighbors got very discouraged and just decided, okay, forget it. I'm kind of done. I'm like, no, I know this is a long game. This is not a short game. It's a long game. It's a long process, not a game. And so I decided I'm just, I'm going to invest myself. I'm going to invest my time. I'm going to get involved. I'm going to get to know city staff. I'm going to develop relationships, because that's how you get things done. And then the next time that you come before the City Council, if they know you and they've worked with you, they know you're reasonable, they know you're not unrealistic, that you, you know, problem-solve and compromise, then you may get more of what you want that way. So that has been my strategy.
Okay. Thank you. And now, Mitch, your turn. What do you believe are the greatest challenges Leewood faces over the next 10 years, and how would you address them?
The greatest challenges that the city faces are all tied up with the issue of growth. Johnson County as a whole is one of the fastest counties in the entire region. Johnson County as a whole is one of the fastest counties in the entire region. And people want to live here in Leewood for all the reasons that we said before. So how do you balance that? Well, I have a cheesy line. It's that Leewood is a city with narrow boundaries but balanced potential. But the fact is, that's, that's the truth. People want to be here. People want to stay here. So how do we balance all that? I would love to promote ownership. I think that young families, it's, there's a housing crisis and it's difficult for young families to move into single-family homes. And I think that promoting ownership is a, is a key part of that future. I also believe though that multifamily homes have their place, particularly in helping people move to Leewood to, as they try and find their future forever home or people who want to stay here. My parents are an example of this. People don't want to sell their larger house here in Leewood and downsize only to buy a house for the same price but fewer square feet. People want to stay in the area so they can be around their grandkids. People want to stay in the area so they can appreciate their friends and the services that we have. So I believe strongly that multifamily home and different styles of home have their role here in Leewood. And how we balance that is going to be one of the biggest challenges moving forward. Because people want to be here, but we don't have that much space.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mitch, you are up next. Why are you seeking this public office?
I'm seeking it because I want to help my hometown. This community gave me so much. It's the place that I was able to walk to school safely every day. And I want to make sure that Leewood stays the kind of place that that's true. I think that, you know, if nothing else, I'll be able to skip the school pickup line, which is always really long when I'm looking at Leewood Elementary. But I think that ties into everything. I think it's important to note that infrastructure, having well-paved roads so kids can get to and from school safely and dropped off, well-maintained sidewalks, but also public safety officers out and about. And I think that's all tied up into this. I hope that my son will be able to safely walk to school. And I want to make sure that that happens, that Leewood stays the kind of place that that can be true. I believe that I have unique experience in making government work for people at the highest levels of government. And I have a strong commitment to the city. I want to be here and I want to see my son graduate from BVN. I want to see him play football and beat the Northwest Huskies. I want to see, I want to see all that. And I think that we can make sure that Leewood, we build upon the tradition of strong, sensible leadership that Leewood has for, they've shown it for decades. And I believe that we can build upon that and be responsible, mindful, thoughtful leaders. And I can be a good candidate to help that.
Thank you. Rachel, same question. Why are you seeking this public office?
So I'm running for Leewood City Council because I want to be a voice for Leewood residents and especially Ward Three. We deserve experienced and effective representation. I really enjoy helping people. It's one of the reasons why I became an attorney because I like to solve problems and I like to help people. And so I have a long track record of public service, both in Leewood and in the wider Kansas City community. I want to make my corner of the world a better place than how I found it. I cannot have an impact in Washington. I can't have an impact in Topeka. I think that's unrealistic. But I can have a big impact in Leewood. And I can have a big impact for Ward Three residents who are going to feel heard and listened to and represented. I've been actively involved in Leewood issues for five years. I, along with my neighbors, advocated, like I said, for the public park at Meadow Brook, at East Village, that we want it to be like Meadow Brook. I have spoken before the Planning Commission and City Council and Public Works Committee numerous times. I'm very comfortable doing that. I will hit the ground running. I know the staff. I know where to go with issues. So if a resident has an issue, I know the person to contact and I can put them together to solve problems. One example is the traffic calming petition that we got signed and completed in Waterford and Willshire Place. We needed to get 75% of the owners to agree to sign off on the traffic calming petition to get traffic, to get speed tables. We got 86% of the voters, of the owners to vote two times for the speed tables to be installed.
Thank you. And final question, I will stay with you, Rachel, to start. What do you believe makes you uniquely qualified to serve in this position and most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
So I'm uniquely qualified to represent Ward Three because I've lived here. I've been Ward Three for 11 years. I've been working with my neighbors for five years on issues that are important to us. That includes development, traffic safety, bicycle and pedestrian safety. I'm the only candidate in the race that has a proven track record of success on behalf of Ward Three. I'm really proud of the traffic calming project. That's only the second traffic calming project in the city's history of having the policy. So in 23 years, this was the second project the city approved. Speeding is the number one resident complaint. And I'm really proud that we improved safety on our street at 132nd and High Drive. I have experienced as an attorney for 26 years. I've run my own law firm and I enjoy solving problems. I am the only candidate that can hit the ground running and I know how, how it works. I care about Leewood residents and I know that a lot of us have, we haven't always felt like our voices were heard. And I want to be the person, not a career politician, but somebody who will listen to residents and who will, who will make them feel heard and to solve their problems. And again, residents can't always get what they want, but we can get pretty close. And if people feel like they're heard and they've been listened to, they feel validated. And that is something I can help accomplish. And so I think that is very important. I understand statutory frameworks. So being a lawyer is similar to being on city council. You have to know the statutory framework and you have to know how your problem fits within that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mitch, final question. What do you believe most distinguishes, makes you uniquely qualified to serve in this position and most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
Well, to be honest, I think that both of us are extremely qualified to be on city council. I think the difference would come down to our experiences and our perspectives. I could talk more about my hands-on legislative experience, making government work for people and serve people and then helping constituents get the answers and resources that they need. But I'd rather spend just another second talking about the fact that my wife and I chose to move back here. You know, I've spent 24 years in Leewood and I look forward to spending 24 more. It was a no-brainer, as I said, to move back here because I know firsthand how special Leewood is, what a welcoming community it is, what a safe community it is, what a loving and caring place it is, what a friendly place it is. But I also recognize that we didn't get here by chance. So I want to bring my unique experience to Leewood. I want to bring the perspective of younger families, which is an emerging demographic here in Leewood and a very important one, as I hear from a lot of my neighbors say, hey, how can you, can you talk to my kids and get them to move back here? But I also want to build upon the legacy of excellence in public service that past mayors and city council members have given this city. I believe that I can help Leewood continue to live with distinction for decades to come. And that's why I look forward to having the opportunity to do. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, thank you both. That concludes the question and answers. So now each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. And we will start with Mitch. Since Rachel let us off, we'll, we'll close with you, so go ahead.
Oh, well, that was a lot of my closing statement right there, to be honest. I'll just say this, you know, yeah, yeah. No, but I think it's important to note that since moving back, I've been looking for a way to, to get involved. And especially things changed when my son was born. Holding him in my arms and taking him home with me. It became clear to me that, you know, he was going to have a future here. And I wanted to be part of that, not just sitting on the sidelines trying to help coach during Pee-wee games, but maybe helping steer this, this city to making sure that it stays exceptional in every way. I think that there are a lot of tricky issues that are going to face, that Leewood residents are going to face in the future. I think that we both have unique qualifications and I have a perspective and experience that I can use to really help bridge the gap as we move forward, bringing people together and helping us continue to just be an excellent place to live. So that's why I want to, to be a public servant. That's why I want to help my hometown. And like I said, I look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Okay, Rachel, you're up two minutes for a closing statement.
I also kind of thought that was closing. So I, I was not, honestly, yeah, I didn't even know Chuck Sipple. I didn't know the term was coming up, to be honest. I was not, I was focused on my traffic calming petition and making sure we got that done. So I found out that Chuck Sipple wasn't going to run again. He has, you know, been a dedicated public servant and well-deserved retirement. And when I found that out and somebody asked me if I'd be interested in running, it didn't take me long to say, yes, I'm going to step up. Because, you know, we need good people who are willing to serve in these positions and people that are invested in the community, that have lived here and have worked with neighbors and that care about our community. And that's what I did. I didn't, I filed right away when I found out. I'd say within about five days, I filed. I didn't wait until the very last day because I knew that I wanted to run. And so I put myself out there. I felt like I was being brave. I've never run for any public office before. And again, I'm not like career in this. So it's something new for me and it's really stretched me. It's really stretched me in many ways. But I've, I've grown a lot through this process and I've met so many people. I've met people canvassing, talking about their concerns, talking about traffic safety, talking about how every subdivision has like a main street within their subdivision that they feel like people speed. So that's just a, you know, wide concern. My family is dedicated to community service. That's how I was raised. We're very proud that we sponsored and brought the Rocksteady Boxing Program to the JCC. It's a program for Parkinson's. And I'm very proud to have brought that to Kansas City and so people can participate in that, you know, free of charge. And it's been a lifesaver for many people. And after my father died, the program was named after him. It's a Parkinson's Wellness Program. That means a lot to me. The JCC is very dear to me and Leewood is very dear to me. I care about my neighbors. I care about people and I care about community service. And so that's why I'm running. That's why I hope you'll vote for me. And I just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. This officially concludes our candidate forum. No more questions. Yeah, I get it, I get it. So we want to thank you both for participating. You both did great. Yeah, absolutely. So thank you both again for participating in today's program. And for everyone else, if you'd like more information about candidates, videos of these candidates here or other candidates in forum interviews, including advanced voting details, all the good stuff, visit our website at votejoko.com. And please share that with all of your friends, colleagues, family, neighbors, the whole, the whole deal. So on behalf of the Leewood Chamber of Commerce, thank you to everyone for taking advantage of this opportunity today. Again, thank you to our candidates and best of luck to both of you. Thank you all.